Hey Brad.
Hey Liz. How's things going? Well?
First, uh, first week of homeschool.
Okay.
Only world, my friend.
Yeah.
We're good though, but man, I wiped at the end of the day.
I can imagine. I've got one of my managers, he's, uh, he's got two daughters in grade school. And it's just, they're, they're, they're struggling. Just, it's a lot of work.
And we're lucky, I mean, we're, we have more flexible jobs, so we can kind of juggle it, but it is the... I think there was a T-shirt that had 2020 and, and they're just trying to cancel it. I might, I might get one of those.
Yeah. Yep.
So Luke, is this your real office?
Uh, it is home office. We actually, the American Cancer Society, closed on the selling of our office on Vista last week. So I am permanently work from home now.
Wow.
It's a pretty sweet affair.
Yeah, we got the basement painted and new carpet and all that, so what you see is, you're trying to kind of build things up, you know, between like, nine and 10 o'clock at night, right? We know when Lincoln's asleep or not, so asleep that I'm gonna wake him up.
I heard the carpet looks terrible. Sorry about that.
Yeah, the guy did it not the best.
I, I just heard that you're helping people do home improvement projects. Uh, you'll get a calendar invite soon.
Uh, I, I'm worth the price you pay. I'll tell you that much.
All right, well, Chris, are we ready? All right. I will call this meeting to order for the record. It is Tuesday, uh, September 1st, 2020 at 4:31 PM. We will begin tonight, uh, this afternoon's meeting with real call attention.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Borton?
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh?
Here.
Councilwoman Strater?
Here.
Councilman Hoagland?
Here.
Councilman Byrne?
Here.
Mayor Simison?
Here.
And Councilwoman Perot is joining now.
Here.
All right, uh, next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Byrne?
I move that we adopt the agenda as published.
Second the motion.
I have a motion second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all of them favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Um, next item is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Byrne?
I move that we approve the consent agenda for the mayor to sign and for the clerk to attest.
Second the motion.
I have a motion second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, all of them favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. There are no items moved from the consent agenda, so we'll move on to action items. Item number 10, uh, Resolution 20 dash 2226, and I'm going to turn this over to, uh, Councilman Strater.
Um, great. Thanks, everybody. So, uh, this is a, um, continuation of the resolution that we discussed in a workshop session with the Clean Energy Resolution for the City of Meridian. Uh, I can kind of maybe walk you through the highlights in terms of changes from the last version. Uh, so the, probably the main one, the, the title of the resolution was shortened, uh, but the point is the same. So we're economically and functionally viable that we will support clean energy in the City of Meridian. Um, in fairness, the original title was a little bit of a run-on sentence, so I, I think the content remains mainly the same. Um, we, we did make a lot of the changes that were discussed, you know, that felt like some reordering and, and building a consensus from our last meeting. Uh, and then at this point, I think the main, probably the main change is, I'm taking a step back on the idea of establishing a committee concept to make recommendations. Um, I think we want to walk before we run. Uh, if we have council support this year for the resolution, you know, we could build on that down the road, uh, just continuing the good efforts that we've already started in the city. So I think, you know, we've been good at building on things incrementally, and if we, you know, don't include establishing a committee, I think that's okay, or we're still heading in the right direction. Um, you know, I think, just to summarize, I think we're building on some really good past efforts in the city. What I like about the resolution is it's setting an intention, especially at a city council level, to lead by example in our city, uh, supporting responsible use of our resources, environmental stewardship, and making smart investments in economically viable clean technologies that we develop here at home can benefit our whole community. Um, so I didn't want to get, get into everything that we talked about already in our last workshop session. I guess I'm just available for any discussion or, uh, when we're ready to take a vote on it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Council, any questions, comments, discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Byrne?
I just wanted to thank Councilwoman Strater for her effort in, uh, in regard to this, uh, resolution. Um, all of the, uh, talking points that she hit on earlier, 1,000% true, and grateful for her and her effort and all she put into this, and, and, uh, I'm confident that as a city will benefit from it. So thank you, Councilwoman Strater, for your time and for your effort.
Councilman Cavanagh?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Byrne pretty much took the words out of my mouth, but particularly, I want to applaud Councilmember Strater for her willingness to make, you know, take that step back, and I like that comment of we gotta walk before we can run. I think sometimes we as council want to bring the whole kit and caboodle all at one time, and I think there's something to be learned for incremental progress, and being able to validate the right decision year after year and growing and improving, and I think that's a, it's a good reminder for me, and, and I appreciate your willingness to take this issue on and to bring it back to us in a more polished version. I'm supportive.
Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Byrne?
I move that we approve Resolution 20 dash 226, a resolution of the City Council, the City of Meridian, supporting Idaho Power's commitment to 100% clean energy by 2045. Brought to us by Councilwoman Strater.
Second the motion?
I have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Uh, the only thing I would say is, uh, I, I think it's also important that you, you know, while, while this is a resolution, it, it does have meaning. Um, I must share a little bit of information real quick before we get there, is, I was notified late last night that the City of Meridian was approved for the grant that we applied for, for an electric fire engine. Doesn't mean we're gonna go out and purchase one tomorrow, um, but it means we will continue our due diligence, so we, we are going down this road. And for anyone who's interested, um, I'll be having solar panels installed on my house tomorrow, beginning at 8:00 AM. Um, if you'd like to come by and, uh, um, help us, help at least see how a practical application of looking at the triple net, um, approach to making decisions about how we can eat through our own part as individuals or as city members. So, with that, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll unless there's any other discussion on the motion. All right?
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton?
I think he said aye. I saw his lips.
Cavanagh?
Aye.
Perot?
Aye.
Strater?
Aye.
Hoagland?
Aye.
Byrne?
Aye.
I don't get a vote, but aye as well. Uh, all ayes. Resolution is adopted. Up next is item 11, uh, Fire Department MOU of Agreement between City of Meridian and the Meridian Rural Fire Protection District. I'll turn this over to Chief Niemeyer. Sorry, Chief, if I just shared some information that you were waiting to share, but...
No worries. Uh, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me okay? Great, awesome. I'm, I'm on a loner computer, so we've had a little issues today. So yeah, uh, exciting news on the, on the DEQ grant. Just to add to that, uh, for council on the resolution motion you just passed, uh, we had two staff vehicles in this year's budget, meaning FY '21, and both those vehicles, uh, we've looked at, they're gonna be hybrid vehicles. We're really excited about that. Uh, in addition, the ladder truck that you all approved through impact fees is incorporating new idle technology, um, that is going to lower emissions, and I know this is gonna not sound great, but in our world it is. Uh, our ladder trucks, those big diesel pushers, get about three miles to the gallon. That's the reality. Uh, this new technology coming in, the new ladder truck bump set up to seven miles to the gallon, so it doesn't sound like much, but it's an incremental change, um, certainly that we're excited about. So to add to your, to your motion that you just made, we're trying to do our part in the fire department. Uh, with that, I am here to present, uh, the, uh, MOU with the rural district. This is a longstanding agreement uh, since 1998, where the rural district has contributed, uh, revenue every year to help with the operation of the fire department. Um, really what this MOU entails is, uh, the city manages the operations through the mayor, the council, and the fire chief. Uh, the rural district doesn't have any input into operations. They don't make any operational decisions. Um, and in return, the city agrees to provide service to the rural residents, uh, as well as a contribution based on a formula that was developed years ago, and I gotta applaud Jenny and, and Rita, and Todd, every year they do a great job of getting this out. Uh, that is based on, uh, a formula that incorporates population in the rural district plus assessed value as compared to the city, and that's really how we get this percentage cost share, uh, from the rural district. So, uh, for FY '21, this is gonna be 8%, that's down 1%. Last year it was 9. Um, as you can imagine, as the city continues to annex, that rural district continues to shrink. They understand that. Uh, there will come a point in time, probably years from now, long after I'm presenting to all of you, uh, that the rural district really won't have a ton of population or assessed value. So what is going to occur then? Uh, today, right now, the rural district has a pretty big share, meaning ownership, of various fire stations and various apparatus in our department, and so as that ability to pay, if you will, diminishes, they will start transitioning that ownership back over to the city as their cost share essentially. That, that was a, again, an MOU developed years and years ago. Um, we've updated it every year, and so what you have before you tonight is just the signing of the 8% uh, to recognize the formula, uh, that Jenny worked so hard to present, and she does a great job of that, presenting that early. Uh, so the 8% will be the revenue share from the rural district next year. That includes everything operations. It includes wages, it includes equipment, it includes our fuels, anything within our line items. Uh, they contribute 8% cost share too. So with that, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh?
Chief, just a, I guess kind of a sideways question that popped in my head as you were presenting is, but there, there wouldn't necessarily be a scenario where the rural goes away then, because as long as we have county subs that are, that are paying into the district, they'll always continue to have some presence, or is, has, has the rural contemplated a time or a tipping point in which they would work to dissolve themselves, and how would that, excuse me, impact, uh, the, the county, county residents?
Yeah, Councilman Cavanagh, great question, and you know, uh, this comment is coming from a good place. I don't look at my crystal ball very often. But on this one, I can. I, I've made the statement, and I truly believe it. I don't think the rural district will ever completely go away. Uh, there is always gonna be a pocket or two. In fact, quite honestly, we have pockets right in the middle of our city that our county and rural district, uh, covered, and that's a challenge for us, quite honestly, from an operational standpoint. It means that there's no hydrants in that area, even though we might have 20, 25, 30 homes in that subdivision right in the core of our city, but we have to send our water tender and call for aid on water tenders because we don't have a hydrant system. So, to answer your question, uh, Councilman Cavanagh, I don't see the district ever going away. It'll probably be pretty small someday. Uh, but I don't know that it'll ever go away unless the city completely covers that response area, and I, I don't know if that'll ever happen.
Council, any additional questions?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just a question for Mr. Nary real quick. Do we, do we need, does council for the mayor to sign?
Yeah, we lost you on that one.
Uh, I'll, I'll, let me try again. Does the, do, does the council need to take formal action on this, or will the mayor just go ahead and sign?
The council will need to move for the mayor to sign clerk to attest to the resume.
Well, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland?
Seeing that there's no further comments or questions from anyone, I would move that the mayor sign and clerk attest to the signing of the memorandum of understanding and agreement between the City of Meridian and the Meridian Rural Fire Protection District.
Second?
I have a motion and seconds to approve the MOU. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, uh, court, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton? Cavanagh?
Aye.
Perot? Strater?
Aye.
Hoagland?
Aye.
Byrne?
All ayes, um, and it is agree to. Thank you. Uh, item number 12 is our police department, a discussion proposed updates to ordinance provisions, ordinance provisions regarding disqualifying criminal convictions for mobile cells unit license and vehicle mobilization licenses. I'll turn this over to Lieutenant Harper.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. I'm here, uh, to present to you guys some updates in regards to disqualifiers, reference the mobile cells unit license ordinance, as well as the, um, vehicle mobilization, um, ordinance. We've had some previous discussions about this, uh, oh, it's been maybe a month now. I kind of lose track of time. Uh, but we were wanting to, to take a closer look, so myself and legal, as well as the, uh, members of the command staff, uh, took a close look at the disqualifications, and really what we saw was, it was a time for an update, and it was really based around, well, where we need to be currently, what the rationale is, but remembering what is important, which is the safety of our public, especially when you have people going out and, um, door-to-door doing cells or having interactions in our community. So, I'm sure you guys all have the packets, and I don't know, Mayor, would you like me to go over some of these changes, because there's quite a few?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so in the mobile cells unit license ordinance, some of the changes that we made, we took out, uh, the reckless driving, eluding section as the city really doesn't have any liability in reference to somebody's driving actions with us having a mobile, with them having a mobile cells license issued by the city. Um, uh, that, that onus would fall on the company, um, who is employing that, that person, so that was something that, that we removed. Uh, also in regards to driving under the influence, and, um, in regards to being able to operate a motor vehicle, again, things in place that take care of that, that I don't feel, that we didn't feel the city was responsible for overseeing. Um, as we move down, uh, in regards to theft and fraud, and this is where we kind of got into the discussion with one of our appeals, um, is really looking at that and figuring out, is the timeframe fair, um, and accurate in today's time? So, we, we changed that from 15 years to 10. Some of the things, I guess, I, I, let me back up real quick. Uh, when we're talking about convictions, we also added, um, any probation or parole violations, uh, pending off of those original cases. Um, and the reason we added that language was really because, um, they're continuing to show, um, acts that we as a city, uh, would be concerned about in regards to their, the, the crimes that they've committed. Um, and moving down, the next change was in regards to firearms. Um, we, we changed some language in regards to the, the concealed carry, um, portion, because in Idaho, you no longer have to have a concealed carry permit, so we didn't want to set a precedent or, or set a rule that, um, if they had a concealed carry conviction, that they couldn't, uh, possess this license in Idaho where we don't recognize that code any longer. Uh, and moving on to the next page, uh, we kind of went back and forth on this in regard, uh, in regards to crimes to children and the elderly, elder, elder abuse of vulnerable people, uh, we moved that to, to five years, and, and really the reason was, in the language within that would include a misdemeanor, um, child abuse, um, conviction, which could technically be as simple as, um, a parent disciplining their child to the point where, um, marks were left, as in a spanking that left marks, something like that, where it's, it's still, it's a misdemeanor, um, offense. So we, we wanted to be careful on what level of, um, what, what level we wanted to have that at. Um, and in regards to, to the use of narcotics or other illicit drugs, we moved that, uh, to five years. Um, and then the last one, we added in quite a bit of language, which we didn't have in the previous ones, in regards to violent felonies, um, which probably should have been our most important thing that, that we've missed along the way. And that's where we really included, um, your, your murders, manslaughter's, rapes, kidnapping, robbery, so on and so forth, as well as any delivery or trafficking of, of illegal drugs. So that, that is, there's quite a few changes, and I, I hope you all have had a chance to, to review those. Um, the same changes took place in the vehicle mobilization license section as well, so that our language is consistent, and we're not having to bounce around looking at different rules, um, for these two ordinances. The mayor, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
I, I think though what I may be struggling with a little bit is probably the one you struggled with, that, that you just referenced, the, you know, crimes involving vulnerable people within five years, and I guess I'm... Uh, is there a way we could get more specific to eliminate things that you think are less serious? Um, or to possibly extend that timeframe? I just, I, I, I'm worried about things like slipping through the cracks of what that means that may not arise to the other points, but that may still be very serious.
Councilwoman Strater, that's, that's a good point, and again, we, we've gone back and forth. We were trying not to make it into a, uh, too lengthy of a document. Um, but absolutely, we can take a closer look and maybe put some exceptions under that subsection, um, in regards to maybe the, the misdemeanor child abuse or something along those lines. Obviously, they're, they're all impor, they're, they're all serious, um, in nature. Uh, but again, we were trying to, to really, I guess, read behind, uh, between the lines a little bit, and, um, make the language in this ordinance a little clearer and easier to understand for those, um, putting in for the mobile cells or vehicle mobilization license.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Nary?
Mr. Members of council, Councilwoman Strater, maybe one of the things to consider, uh, lieutenant can look at, and Emily Kane, the, from my office, the one helps write these as well, is separating between felonies and misdemeanors, or also not counting the jail period. So, so that you wouldn't have somebody that could have gotten out of jail after five years on a, on an abuse of a vulnerable adult that wasn't a sex crime, so they don't have to register as a sex offender, but they've literally been out of jail for 30 days, and they're, they're outside of five years. So that might be a way to break off the more serious offense versus the minor. Yeah, I prosecuted many parent claims that were fairly minor claims of leaving your kid alone for an hour, those kinds of things that clearly aren't what we're trying to, uh, address. It really is, like you're saying, Councilwoman Strater, the person who's abusing adults that again, may not be a sex crime, so they're not gonna register, but if they're abusing children, most likely the sex offender provision is gonna be the catch-all for those, but those might be a way to break those up, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perot?
In that same vein, um, regarding the section that talks about, um, misdemeanor fraud and theft, um, maybe some clarity on that. So, you know, if there's an 18-year-old and they have a petty theft charge for something very small, and now they're 27, and they've made some changes in their life, and they want to pursue, um, a license, you know, there, just some clarity in that as well, that it may be something, misdemeanor, um, petty theft can sometimes be fairly insignificant. So, just a suggestion there on if there's gonna be additional clarifications made.
Thank you, Councilman Perot. Council, any further questions or comments on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Lieutenant Harper?
Uh, I, I do want to put on the record, I, I see here that we are missing... Oh, I just found it. Disregard.
Well, I, I guess my question for council, um, would you like to see these, these items that were just discussed incorporated and have this brought back for further consideration? Is there general consensus on that? Seeing enough heading ons that I think, Lieutenant Harper, if you want to take that feedback and, and bring it back in the next two to three weeks?
Will do. Thank you for your time.
And, Mr. Mayor, I had one quick question.
Councilman Hoagland?
Yeah, uh, under item C, we talk about telephone harassment, and I'm sure the courts have kept up to date, but to me, there's types of harassment now occurring on social media that, that could cross the line. Uh, maybe a question for Bill. Does that cover that sort of thing, if it's that serious of nature?
Councilman Hoagland, I think I can answer that. Um, they're, they're covering a lot of this now with amendments to the language in regards to electronic harassment, um, that covers some of that, but I will double-check, um, to see if that's a different code or it actually has a different title, and make sure to include that as well, if you would like, sir.
Okay. Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now we are on to item 13, which is adoption of 2020 UDC text mandate, H2020 dash 0072. Um, council, you asked that this was to be brought back. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna turn this over to Mr. Hood.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, members of council. As I think the mayor was just gonna say, uh, two weeks ago, you request, uh, I believe, uh, Councilman Cavanagh made the motion, uh, to continue this out for two weeks. Councilwoman Strater and Perot were both absent. I just wanted to make sure they were good with the, um, proposed code changes. I trust that, uh, you have had a chance to review those and, and, uh, the minutes from two weeks ago, but I, I'm happy to go through kind of my outline in the presentation again, uh, if needed. I guess I'll pause there just for a second to make sure. I guess I'll pause there just for a second to make sure everyone's kinda on the same page here.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, Ms. Strader.
Yeah, I, I think, um, Caleb, I looked, I reviewed everything. I think I was in agreement with pretty much the group's consensus on everything, that the one piece I wondered about, maybe just to throw it out for the group, um, regarding the, um, deadline, if you will, or a, maybe not a mandate, but a guidance on when the public should provide, you know, their feedback and on the public record. I was just thinking it might, from my perspective, it might be better to finalize that deadline or those times at the same time that we finalize other deadlines, uh, either for the applicant or for planning staff. Just felt to me like it was kinda making a decision in a vacuum without seeing the whole timeline and all of the potential deadlines that were holding people to. Um, and then I wondered about, Councilwoman Burton had a good point about our ability to continue items. I just wanted to throw an idea out for you to think about, which was, you know, maybe if things get up to a certain deadline, they get automatically continued because it's just too tight. That was my feedback.
So, Mr. Mayor, can I address ma- maybe a couple of those and?
Yes, Mr. Hood.
So, again, just maybe so everybody's on the same page, the packet's pretty, pretty large this week because of the comp plan, uh, resolution, I think, but, uh, this item does begin on page two sixty-seven, and, and really the substantive, uh, information starts on two seventy-one. Uh, the section that, that Councilwoman, uh, Strader was just talking about is a new section, well, some of what she was talking about, a new section eleven-five-A, six-H. Um, and a- as you recall, last time, a lot of the discussion was, should they submit written testimony, or shall the written testimony be submitted noon, uh, the day prior to the hearing? I can kinda walk you through, if you'd like, kinda some of the other deadlines. I don't have that where I can just show it to you right now, you know, some of those other deadlines we have, but I can let you know, we are also looking at in the next round of UDC changes, and this has kinda been our unwritten policy for several years now, um, any new information that's submitted by a developer, we, we strongly encourage them to get that to us at least ten days before a hearing. Staff has to have time to analyze that and provide an updated memo or staff report. So there's one that I think is critical. That's one of the last deadlines in this whole process is, we try not to accept, and, and again, it's not a, it's not in our code, it's an unwritten policy we have, um, but we, we do encourage applicants, if they're going to make any change, and we can have conversations about that, is, is it, should it be ten days or fifteen days or more? Is that an adequate amount of time? Um, I would just refresh your memory that, that our process is set up in that there's roughly thirty days between when a Planning and Zoning Commission hearing happens and a City Council meeting. So if you back it up too much, there's really no time for an applicant to make any changes because they've already missed the deadline. Um, so just, we, we have a pretty small window there for any changes to be made between Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council. So we're trying to kinda walk that fine line of, and I'm not, in a perfect world, no changes would be made, right? Uh, ideally, so everybody's working from the same sheet of music, but, um, again, hopefully that provides a little bit of context into some of the other deadlines we have, but we really, this would be the first, um, and again, we didn't, sorry to kinda double back, didn't change anything from what you're reviewing tonight, it still says shall in the draft. Um, I didn't hear consensus that everybody liked should. Uh, we certainly can Lewis should. Most of the code is a, a shall, a black and white, but in this case, really the intent is to encourage folks to get stuff in, so it can be reviewed and considered as part of the public hearing. So, and I'm kinda rambling a little bit there, but I don't have an exact timeline and, and, and fully address that, but it's something we are, uh, again, aware of and look to further process improvements in the next round of UDC changes.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, Ms. Sherr.
Um, just to clarify, I was just suggesting, maybe we punt on our decision on, on that item specifically for the next round, so we could consider them together. Um, I, I don't think we have to hold this up over that. I, I, I wouldn't vote against it for that reason, but I just thought that might help, help you and help everyone if we're considering them, those sorts of deadlines at one time. That's all.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm Pro.
Um, so I, I don't have any recommended changes. Um, being the community development liaison, I've been involved in this process from the beginning and have been, um, really appreciative of the ability to share my input on each of these things and thankful for all the staff's, um, incredible hard work in collecting, um, information from as many different, um, individuals in the public as possible. They really have made a significant effort to make sure that these changes are well-thought-out and, um, and meet the needs of, of the many different, um, groups and individuals involved in, in the, um, land use application process and public hearing process. So just, um, a huge thank you to them. This has been, this hasn't been a very small undertaking, so, and I know we're, we're not, we're only part of the way through the process, so.
Thank you, Counsel, I'm Pro. So, Mr. Hood, it sounds like you've got, uh, the feedback we were looking to get from Councilman Cavanagh's comments. Um, I know there's your desire to see something, an ordinance brought back here in a couple of weeks, um, so I guess I'm gonna throw it out to Counsel, that's really the next point in this conversation. Are you comfortable bringing this back in an ordinance form for consideration?
Yes.
I'd, I'd see a general consensus on that, so, um, I think any further conversation we'll have when the ordinance is brought back for consideration at that point in time. So, Mr. Hood, I think, do you have what you need?
So, Mr. Mayor, I, I have what I need, I just wanna make sure, um, and this is where my notes kinda fail me a little bit, so I'm gonna put Mr. Nary on the spot just a little bit. This was a public hearing two weeks ago, I don't remember if you actually closed the public hearing, or if we need to close the public hearing, and, uh, yes, you will have an ordinance that you'll actually consider and adopt here, and, uh, we're targeting, uh, the twenty-second of September, by the way, just because of the holiday, working with legal to get that ordinance on your calendar, the twenty-second seemed to be, um, but I just wanna make sure, uh, this, this, this is an action item, even though the ordinance will still be considered, and, um, it'll still be obviously in draft form, but I wanna make sure we're good with the public hearing process and any motion that may be needed instead of just direction.
So, Mr. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Nary.
Uh, Mr. Members of the Council, I, I do believe that, my recollection was, we left the council, the, uh, public hearing open, um, so we can close the public hearing, and the, uh, the direction we're seeking action tonight is simply to bring forward a final, a final ordinance for review and potential approval.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, Cavanagh.
Just for, for clarification, and I, I can't recall, to be honest, the, the motion that, that I made, but we don't have it listed as a public hearing on our agenda today. I don't know if that's problematic.
Mr. Members of the Council, I, I don't, I don't believe it's problematic. I mean, again, it was, I, it's only my recollection that what we did was, we left it open so we could add more comment, but you're not required to have a, a continuous public hearing on an ordinance anyway, so there's no issue from a procedural standpoint, so.
Mr. Clark, are you checked to see if we opened, will it fluff it open?
Mr. Mayor, yes, I'm referring to the minutes right now.
We'll have that answer whether we're open or closed momentarily, one way or the other.
I'm sorry to bring it up, I just wanna make sure we're crossing all the Ts here.
I appreciate you.
Counsel, I'm Burt. And to confirm, um, are we leaving out the portion of the should or shall question that was spoken of earlier in regard to public testimony and when it can be received? Are we including that in this, um, in this, in this part? Are we going to wait and include that into the next discussion? Just wanna confirm.
So, Mr. Mayor, no, it's not necessarily a question for me, but if I could comment on that, I guess, a little bit, I, I mean, I'd like the ordinance to be as clean as possible. So if, if there's a majority of you all that like should, I can work with legal and change that in the ordinance that you'll be reviewing in a few weeks. So, uh, I'm not trying to belabor this here, but again, if we can make this, streamline this, and if, if we've got a majority, I'm willing to change it. I haven't received that direction to change it, um, as of yet, but I'm certainly willing to do, to do that if that is the direction given.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm Burt.
My personal opinion would be to change it to should, just in the, in the interest of, um, you know, uh, public testimony and giving them opportunities to express their concern or support, uh, for certain, uh, applications. I, I think that it would be wise, um, if we have, if this becomes a problem, however, maybe we need to address it in the future. Um, but I'm going to err on, um, giving the, the community, uh, the benefit of the doubt that they'll respect the rule and they'll understand the reason why we have the code in place, and, and, uh, so that would be my, that would be my, uh, perspective.
Agreed.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I do have your answer. Um, Counselman Cavanagh moved to close the public hearing, it was seconded by Burnt and all in favor, and then the item was continued to the work session on nine-one, it was seconded and all were in favor. So we do have a closed public hearing.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, Ms. Sherr.
Um, I, I guess what I'm wondering is, if we, if, unless we all agree it should be shall or should, but couldn't, isn't one option to consider this change on eleven-five-A, six-H with the next round of UDC changes? Is there a benefit to doing that that might change our view when we have a more holistic view of like what the deadlines are for other parties involved? That, that was my only point. I don't know if Mr. Hood has any thought on that, or if there's a reason that it, it should be done as soon as possible.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Mr. Hood.
Uh, Councilwoman Strader, uh, yeah, I mean, especially if we change it to should, um, there really isn't any teeth behind it anyways, so if, if we lessen the language to be a, boy, we'd really appreciate it if you would, um, you know, I, I guess to the maker of the motion, well, it wasn't a motion, I guess, but Councilman, uh, Council President Burt's, uh, point, you know, if it becomes a problem, we can always become more strict. I mean, gotta go through this process again and make it a shall, uh, if it's a problem, but I, I, I really could go either way here. Um, we will have some changes, though, in this same section that are being considered by our UDC focus group, uh, currently, so, uh, there is some benefit to your proposal as well. So I will, again, defer and do whatever Council majority wants to do.
Counsel, here's, here's a third option for you, uh, as I'm looking for that middle option, um, these days to have conversations, just take it out altogether. Should, should means nothing, it has no real value. We have, we can provide that guidance in other ways without it being in the code. Um, I, I'm a fan of having it in there and having those hard dates or timeframe so people know, if you want it to be read, you need to have it in by the state. Anything else, you may or may not see it from that standpoint, but why even have a should and just remove it altogether?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm Pro.
I agree with that. I mean, we, staff's already in the, in the practice of telling, um, you know, especially anybody who contacts them directly with questions, or who is submitting a public comment, um, the applicant that's submitting public comment, or, uh, you know, I don't know if an email is sent out every time an, um, a public comment is made on an application, but they're already in the habit of letting people know, hey, at this point, it's possible that Counsel isn't gonna review this. That's already a practice that's happening, so to me, if it's not gonna say shall, then just suggest that it come out, 'cause it has, as Caleb has said, it has no teeth. And, and I don't anticipate that this would've even been a topic of discussion to put in here as a suggested code change, if, if the manner in which it was being handled at this moment was being effective.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm Hoagland.
My, my thoughts on this, I, I kinda like having should in there because it gives some guidelines to people, and, and most people are pretty good about attempting to follow guidelines. Uh, I, I, I mean, we could be here, if we have a six o'clock meeting tonight, and we're, we get a big public hearing, and we're in pre-counsel, and people are sending material, there's no way we can, we can review it. And there should be at least a guideline or something that makes them understand, well, if, if it's not in by then, you know, it, it may not, may not be seen, because that would be the case if something is coming in right now for something later tonight, um, we just don't have that opportunity. So, I, I, I just see it as guidance, uh, so there's some value to it. I mean, the point is well-taken that, you know, why, why have it at all? But I, I look at it as just some guidance to people to kinda have this, it, it should be in. You, you should be doing it in advance to allow proper, proper vetting of the, of, of what you're recommending, so that's just my two cents.
And Counselman Hoagland, I don't disagree, I'm just saying it's, you need to have that guidance in that location, 'cause guidance can be given in other ways, on cut sheets, on other handouts, but you wanna have it in code. And I, I guess, you know, I, I turn to the legal folks, but I know we don't say you should drive fifty-five miles per hour, you know, it, it, we are, we are a black and white in terms of a organization, but not everything in planning is black and white all the, all the time. So that's, that's my only point, is ordinances and laws with should. Ask Mr. Borton how often to should, a really good clarifier of what you should uphold in what you do in the law.
Mr. Mayor. To, to follow up.
Go ahead.
Oh, just to follow up, yeah, and, and that, that's a very good point, you know, in the legislature we see, is it shall or is it may? That's, that's the argument over, over one word. I guess if, if you wanna be realistic, you need, don't like, uh, shall, we can just say must be, so that would solve it.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm Board. Counsel, I'm Board.
So I, I don't really have heartburn if it comes out, if it's any, if it is in there, I think should is the only thing you can't do, we talked about this before, you can't have a hard deadline and exclude public testimony. It's quasi-judicial, we've got, there's due process rights, and I think everyone's gonna have a role in providing stuff late, so, um, so you take it out or use should. The only example that illustrates another way it's dealt with by those on the bench is, when this happens in court and there's a late filing, and they ask, have you read it? The judge says, no, I just didn't. You can file all you want, I'm not gonna look at it. And you need more time and we can continue it. Um, people pick it up pretty quick that applicants in particular, if they wanna try and wait till the eleventh hour as well, um, it doesn't go well. And we, upon the dais, create some unofficial policy and practice that we don't, we're not gonna be reading applicant submittals at four o'clock on a Tuesday, or from the public. So I, I agree with Councilwoman Strader, it can come out, continue to be noodled, but if it's anywhere in there, uh, should is the best direction, really the most accurate direction, whether it's in UDC or in some other cut sheet.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm, Counsel, I'm Burt.
You're not gonna get consensus, I don't think, just, uh, reading the tea leaves here. Um, you're, you're, uh, we're probably looking at three or four different options, and so I say we, uh, just, uh, talk about this, take this portion out, talk about it at a later date, and, um, we can talk more about it. I don't, I don't know if we're gonna get there quite tonight.
Mr. Hood, that work for you for now?
I, I, again, I will follow your, your lead, um, and we'll, we'll talk about it here in a couple, few weeks, I guess, when the ordinance comes before you, so. And we'll, we'll talk about it here in a couple few weeks, I guess, when the ordinance comes before you. So.
I think the point is that may bring it back into further conversations. You know, maybe take it out for now, see how education goes, what the response is. And if you, if you feel like we need to put it in because you're getting the question asked a lot. I just don't know who goes to the UDC to figure out when they should submit testimony on public hearings. That's part of my, my, my big question. I mean, that's really not a, oh, let me go search when they'll accept my testimony level, in my opinion, but I could be wrong. Maybe people really enjoy reading the UDC to figure that type of information out.
Funny, Mayor.
Yeah, you wait till later. I'm hilarious tonight. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Back on the twenty-second. Oh, that was Perrow or Scherer?
Perrow.
Councilwoman Pro.
So, I just wanted to say the, the origin of where this sort of came to be was really less about council reviewing public comment and about planning and zoning reviewing public comment. Because in a lot of, a lot of the public comment that we review was submitted before the planning and zoning hearing. So, what was happening was planning and zoning was not having an opportunity to review things. And since they, their focus is to really make recommendations to us on, on UDC and the more technical things regarding this, the applications, it is really important for them to have that public testimony and, and some of, when it talks about public testimony, it wasn't just about individual members of the public, but it was also, also having to do with information we were receiving from, from other governing bodies and whatnot. I don't know. It just, if I remember correctly, the, the origin of this whole conversation was really about P and Z getting to see some of this comment and not about city council. So, to Councilwoman Borton's point, if we are sort of unofficially creating policy, yes, city council is doing that, but, but planning and zoning really isn't. And they're really the ones that have been, that are being affected by this more than we are. So, just, just to throw that out there.
Council, anything else? Hey, Mr. Hood?
Thank you.
Good to go. With that, we'll move on to item fourteen, Department Commission Reports. Community development discussion regarding school district data for staff reports. And I will turn this over to Miranda.
Mr. Mayor, didn't you say this was going to be a five-minute discussion?
Yes, absolutely.
Hi. So, this is a draft table that I was requested to make for, to evaluate developments versus the school district. So, talking about what kind of impact the development will have on individual schools within, that the development falls within the boundary. I'm going to share my screen here so you can see the table I'm referencing. So, the data that was evaluated was building permit data, historical building permit data, and also data relevant to a specific development. Looking at the data that falls only within the school boundaries that would be affected by the development. So, I'm going to go through the table. And most of your questions that will probably pop up as I'm going through the table will be answered as I go through it with the assumptions. And then afterwards, if you have any further questions, I'll be happy to answer those. So, this is data that we would, if the council likes the data, we would suggest be put onto the staff report. I would propose that it be put on for applications with fifty or more residential units. And I do just want to have a disclaimer before I start that this is reference data. This is not meant to be a decisive tool for we should or should not approve a development. This is a static shot of data in a very dynamic community. So, looking at this is, this specific table is based on the Prescott Ridge development. So, each development will have its own specific table. This development is proposed to include three hundred and sixteen single-family residential units and fifty-six multifamily residential units. The schools that will be affected by the development are Pleasant View Elementary, Star Middle, and Meridian High School. It falls within those boundaries. The distance, capacity, and enrollment data that's displayed in the table comes straight from the West Ada School District Agency Comment Letter. If at any time when I'm doing this analysis or staff member is doing this analysis and that letter has not been created yet, we can go to, the State Department of Education also has this data. The West Ada students generated by development is looking at how many single-family and multifamily units are in that specific development and comparing it to the student generation rate. In the past, I've told you that we looked at the student generation rate as point eight students per unit. Met with the school district last week, had a good meeting with Marcy Horner, the new planning administrator there. And we came to the determination that for the West Ada School District, it's closer to point seven students per single-family unit and point one student per multifamily unit. We can continue to discuss that as things change, but for this school year, that's the numbers that they are planning to use. And I think it would be wise if the city uses the same indicator. So, using point seven for single and point one students for multifamily, the students generated by this development, and it is estimated to be a hundred and five Pleasant View, fifty-two Star Middle School students, and seventy Meridian High School students. This is just for the Prescott Ridge development. And this would be the development at its completion. So, this is not evaluating any kind of absorption rate or ten-year build-out. The next columns are historical building permits. So, looking at how many dwelling units were included in residential building permits that were issued. So, in two thousand and sixteen, there was a hundred and fifty-three units within the building permits that were issued in the Pleasant View Elementary boundary, hundred and fifty-three in the middle, Star Middle boundary, and five hundred and twenty-three in the Meridian High School boundary. The data is also available for twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, and including the percent of change from the previous year. In twenty nineteen, there's an additional column that shows what percent of the total city's residential growth is happening in that school boundary. So, in twenty nineteen, thirty-nine percent of the dwelling units included in building permits that were issued fell inside the Meridian High School boundary. So, that gives you an indicator of about how fast that area is growing and how much of the growth that's happening in the city is happening within that school already. The twenty eighteen data is based on, the actual counts are based on what was available as of eight eighteen. And then an estimated total was accumulated based on if the remainder of the year continues, the remainder of the calendar year continues to have permits issued at the same rate the last, the rest, sorry, the earlier of the calendar year has been issued at. So, at the same monthly rate. The student generation rate of point seven and point one was then applied to those units as well, be it single or multifamily. And this is how many students we would estimate will be generated from the twenty twenty building permits that will be issued. So, we don't know how long it will take to build those, but saying that in twenty twenty, this is how many dwelling units are included in building permits. This is how many students we think will come from those dwelling units. The V column is the estimated West Ada enrollment after permits and development. So, this is a total of what the current enrollment is, what we think will be developed by, what we would think will be generated by the Prescott Ridge development and what we think will be generated by the building permits through the end of this year. So, that gives you how many students we think will be in the school and then a rating of their current capacity versus that number. This count does not include anything that's already been approved, but has not had permits issued yet. So, one of the next steps will be looking at how we can incorporate preliminary plat data for plats that have already been approved to see what kind of generation rates those will have. I do want to also point out that the point seven and point one is for the West Ada School District only. It does not include students in charter schools, private schools, or homeschool settings. The growth data is based, again, only on the building permits. It's not based on the preliminary plats. You should also note that when we're looking at the estimated enrollment after permits and development, it does not include any growth that happens outside of the city of Meridian. So, almost every West Ada school boundary includes areas that fall outside of the city of Meridian. Any growth that happens outside of that will be, will not be included in this number. So, those students will be attending that school, but we don't have the information to include that. So, that should just be considered as well. The dwelling units are based on, as I said, the dwelling units in the building permits, and that includes any units that have age restrictions. So, for the purpose of this analysis, units with age restrictions were calculated the same way as units without age restrictions. And then just to note that the school attendance areas listed here are the school attendance areas as they were when this data was pulled. The school attendance areas can change. Usually, they don't change during the school year, but they can. They can change anytime during the school year or between school years. So, the next steps that I would want to include again would be looking at preliminary plat data and then any other data that the council sees that they would like to have included. I also wanted to show you briefly just some maps. This is not data that will be included in the staff report, but it gives you a little bit of background so you can see kind of how I pulled those numbers. So, you can see the red lines are the preliminary plats. That's the data that's not currently included. And the yellow dots are the building permits.
Mr. Mayor, I believe, Miranda, you're not sharing your screen that you think you're sharing? You're just seeing your PowerPoint or your Excel documents still?
Oh, okay. Hang on one second here. Okay. Can you see this map?
Yep.
Okay. Sorry about that. So, the red lines again are the preliminary plat data. That's not currently included, but we do want to include that at some point if that's something the council would like to see. The yellow is the building permits that have been issued. Yellow is single-family and purple is multifamily. This is the Pleasant View boundary. So, this kind of shows you how much growth is happening in that boundary. These are all the building permits issued from twenty sixteen through eight eighteen, twenty twenty. So, just to give you a little bit broader view of that, this is the high school example. So, you can see the multifamily units that are being issued within the high school and you can see where the most growth is happening when you're going to approve a development or consider a development. So, this shows you right where the Prescott Ridge development is, and then you can see the growth in the rest of the city. Again, that's not something, there's already several maps in the staff report that can indicate where growth is happening. So, this won't be included in the staff report. What would be included, what I propose would be included would just be this table minus any information you don't think is relevant or adding any information that you do think is relevant. So, that is all I have. And at this time, I continue getting questions.
Thank you, Miranda. Council, any questions regarding this information? I don't expect any, but oh, wait, there's one. Councilwoman Scherer?
Sorry, I, I have written down a bunch of stuff and to be fair, like maybe Miranda, I can have a sidebar with you. Like, because I just, I have a bunch of stuff. One thing I did want to ask about though, that's more of a high-level question is just, has the school district, in one of their meetings, they talked about whether they wanted to get to a program capacity number? Because the bottom line is like bodies and buildings is not what, what they think indicates their level of crowding or capacity. Has their thinking evolved on that? Is one question that I have. And then I have another one and I'll save the rest of my tiny questions for later.
Yes, so they do want to get to a program capacity. It's not an easy task and it's an ever-moving target. So, as programs change, as the student population changes, not just a student count, when I say student population, I mean, what are the students' needs? Which students are gifted and talented and which students have special needs that can change year to year for the schools? So, the program capacity is a hard target to hit, but it is something that I know that they're working on. And were they to come up with a program capacity that they wanted to use, then we could put that in for the capacity. Currently, this is the design capacity. And I should also know that the Pleasant View enrollment, just have a little note there. That is the estimated enrollment that was projected for the opening. Because the school year hasn't started yet, we don't know the enrollment. This was, three ninety-seven was the projected enrollment and three forty-one is what the enrollment was most recently pulled. So.
Mr. Mayor, a quick follow-up.
Councilwoman Scherer?
I think it would be great if city council could play with this spreadsheet a little bit, because there's a lot, I mean, it's pretty granular and there's a lot of detail. That would really help me conceptualize it. I guess my final question for this meeting is just, you know, we've got three thousand, six hundred, almost four thousand students enroll, enrolling in the virtual schoolhouse. That feels temporary because of COVID. Are you planning to freeze enrollment at year end of this past academic school year and then project out? Or how are you going to tackle that?
I had planned to base enrollment on actual enrollment. So, if the council would rather me freeze it, I can. But keep in mind that as boundaries change, enrollment will change. So, a school could be frozen and we could be looking at it and say, this school's overcapacity because we froze it due to COVID. But then a chunk of that, those students are moved to another school the next year. And if we haven't, or even during the year sometimes happens. And if we haven't updated those numbers, that won't be reflected.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Scherer?
I, I guess I'm sort of looking at it like, we have a new school that was created on an emergency basis that will take up almost, you know, ten percent of the West Ada School District enrollment capacity. And so, I'd be curious what the rest of council thinks, but I feel like I need like a pre-COVID number to wrap my head around in the hopes that one day the COVID situation is over. That's just me.
I could try to get a percent for high school, middle school, and elementary school. I wouldn't want to do a percent across the board because it's going to be pretty drastic. There's going to be a difference between the three levels. High schoolers can stay home and do their work online, so you might see more online. But we could get a percent of high schoolers that are virtually enrolled versus total enrollment and then do some estimating and assumptions. But I would also note that a lot of the things in this, these columns, these columns, anything that says estimated is based on a lot of assumptions already. So, this is something where we have to make assumptions in order to have any kind of total. So, to add even more assumptions, just keep in mind that that will, the end result will get blurrier and blurrier. Which is fine, but you just want to note that when you're considering the information.
Mr. Mayor?
And, and council, that was going to be at least my perspective as one is the more we second guess what the numbers are based upon their programs or, I mean, there's no guarantee that those four people, four thousand will ever come back into real school. Or the charter schools get built and they siphon off and I, you know, I think that all we can really do is year over year, what we know for fact versus what we think is going to happen with any school the following year because of a boundary change, another school opening or I think, that's at least my opinion, is go with the facts for what we, what they tell us, and then we can make assumptions on what we believe on the data we input to supplement their facts. That's at least my opinion. Councilwoman Pro?
Thank you. So, if I am understanding Councilwoman Scherer correctly, I think what she was getting at with the pre-COVID numbers is there's a lot of parents that are taking their students completely out of the district and homeschooling them. So, there isn't even So there isn't even going to be like a virtual enrollment number for those individuals. So I don't want to speak for her, but I think that's kind of what she's getting at. And I agree, I'd like to see those numbers as they were. Maybe 2019, 2020 school year is sort of our baseline for that figure, because there, I know many people who are just completely taking them out of the district altogether and going through a homeschooling program like K-12 or another private program. But I would anticipate that at some point, they would be returning into the district. And I would guess that the district is able to, to track that based on how many people disenroll from, uh, from the schools. So there's that. And then I also wanted to say, first of all, Miranda, this is incredibly impressive. Thank you for this. This is, I mean, this is amazing. This, this, um, this chart is the best thing I've seen so far to get a feel for it. For me, the, the, the building permit numbers are important, maybe for the last two or three years. But what's really important to me is, is as far as using this data to make land use decisions is what has been permitted, but what isn't, or what has been pre-platted, but what isn't permitted yet? Because that's where it really comes to us getting a grasp on exactly how many new students are going to be coming into a particular, um, school. And so hopefully, you'll get an opportunity to find a way to gather that information. And I know that, I don't know if that is really labor-intensive or you have to go through each individual project and, and look at it. But, um, so as far as the chart goes, if, if the 2016 building permit numbers really aren't helping reflect what is coming, then maybe, maybe it's not necessary to go four years back on the building permits. It just, um, now they're, you know, so the building permit chart, I assume, means that we can most definitely count those units. They're built, they exist, or they're going to exist. I know in the decision-making process, what still is yet to exist is, is what is the most, you know, is that information that's just kind of out there without, without a figure behind it.
Yeah, I definitely want to get the bill, the permit, the preliminary Platt data in. It is more labor-intensive than pulling building permits. And I wanted to be able to show you some of what we've been working on thus far. Also, I wanted to know as well, as far as students being pulled out for a charter or homeschool, currently, that is reflected in the student generation rate. So we did extensive research. I did extensive analysis with the school district on how many students in the West Ada District, not necessarily just the city of Meridian, but how many students in the West Ada District are being generated per household, and looking at how many of those might be private or charter versus how many students the census has. So those kinds of things are already in the student generation rate. If we were talking about next year, maybe pulling out some of that, we could look at recalculating the student generation rate, and that would probably be a better way to do it than to say, this is our current enrollment, and let's take off 10% because we just kind of think 10% might be going out. So that's already very detailed analysis that went into that point seven and point one. So if you would like me to use 2019 enrollment for the rest of 2020, that's, you know, the council's decision, I can use what number you want me to use. And then for the next year, if we're still in COVID times, which it looks like we will be, we can look at if we need to adjust the student generation rate. I can tell you, though, that point seven and point one is what the school district plans on using, and I haven't heard anything so far, doesn't mean they won't, but I haven't heard anything saying that they're going to adjust how they plan to build based on COVID.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Holton?
Yeah, Miranda, question, uh, this is a good example to, to use. How can we, how can you display information? If, if Prescott Ridge Development comes online, and the kids are going to go to Meridian High School at the start, but we know why he high school's going to open maybe a year later, and it's going to siphon off those kids to the, to the new high school. And it could be a middle school, elementary school, or sometimes we have developments. We know we've had where why he high school's going to be opening, and those, that new development, the kids will be going to that high school. How, how are we going to show that, that information?
Definitely, so that's a very good point. And I think this data that is displayed is more of the quantitative data. There are the hard facts in there with the permits, and then some assumptions that we can make based on some good analysis, analyses for the estimates. As far as more qualitative, these students might be rezoned. Those are the kinds of things that I would say you should look to your West Ada Agency letter, because they do generally include some of that information. For example, for Prescott Ridge, Pleasant View doesn't have an enrollment count, but it says Pleasant View will be built, some of these students will go there. So the more qualitative what's coming on board, that's the kind of place you're going to want to find that, is the agency letter. The chart that would be put into the staff report would just be more of that quantitative data based on estimates and assumptions.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Board?
Well, one question on the assumptions, that's, we'd live and die with those in a model like this. Is there also an assumption that within a particular zone, a residential unit generates a point seven student in perpetuity?
Yes, so that's where we would look at if we need to adjust the student generation rate. But the school district has used the same student generation rate historically, and they've been pretty on mark. This is the first time it's been updated in quite some time. Largely, that's because we have so many more multifamily coming on, and the school district was, now has a staff capacity to update the number, and they were willing to sit down with me and update that. So they were a really good partner in that. But because it's based on census data, historical census data, historical things like what percentage of, what percentages of dwelling units are multifamily versus single family historically, it's not based on just one year. So it can be assumed, again, back to the assumptions, that it will be the point seven and point one in perpetuity. And then if we start seeing some drastic changes, then we can adjust that.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Board?
The, well, I, I guess what we see in Meridian High School is a great example, and some of the neighborhoods that, that did in fact have houses that generated point seven, but, you know, the kids are long gone, and all the students are gone, and neighborhoods now no longer are filling the high school anymore. Certainly not at the same ratio as new development. So I'm wondering if, if there is, do we need to factor in any adjustment that? So for Meridian High School, for example, it has students in, in older neighborhoods that will graduate and leave, and those residential units aren't replacing it with a new point seven for that school. How do we factor that in?
Right, so that's a great question. So for current, for current neighborhoods, you can think of it as the students generated in the current neighborhoods are the current enrollment. So we're not saying this neighborhood has 50 houses, so it generates point seven students per house. We're saying this neighborhood is getting 10 new houses, and it already has X number of students. So this is how many students we think will come from that neighborhood. So neighborhoods that have already aged out, their current enrollment will be less, and we were not looking at the, we're not looking at the number of units when it comes to those older population housing. We're only looking at the units when we're looking at new houses. Does that answer the question?
Mr. Board, maybe this would, that, that number is reflected in the enrollment number. But what you're really getting to is as that enrollment number modifies, it, it does change and update, and it can go up or down based upon the same boundary for that very reason. So you, you got, yeah, you just have to look at them in conjunction. That's why this is such a point-in-time scenario where, and that, that was really my, my caution to using assumption numbers about where students are at any point in time or what may or may not occur, because the school district can adjust the boundary. They can change the programs that are at that school. You know, those are types of things where if you're looking at numbers that were based upon, well, we, this is what we thought, or this was the number last year, that the whole situation could be greatly modified if we start putting in our own assumptions about numbers. I mean, you just got to go with the hard data facts for any given year. And intuitively, know that COVID maybe is putting a, a different spin on the number this year. But as a, as a standard practice, I think you just got to get to a very, a set way of looking at the numbers, so you're not making your own assumptions on every application. But you can say that's what the number is in terms of what the program or capacity is, and these are the, what will be generated. And knowing that, you know, it could be changed, different the next year if you see an application for that same area because of what may have occurred. You know, 10 families all decided to leave, and they all had 10 kids. Now your, now your enrollments are down for that area just from a natural decision made by the consumer.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Schrader?
Well, I, I wanted to say, Miranda, thanks so much for the work so far. I mean, that column B looks like the closest thing to a pro forma number that we've ever seen. So that's awesome. And I'm not trying to be nitpicky, I just like to be nerdy about it. And I was thinking, though, I, I have heard anecdotally, for what it's worth, that there, there are some schools that, um, year-end enrollment from the past school year, the spring was drastically higher than the beginning of the year. And so maybe I would just ask you to, to try to follow up on what, at least for informational purposes, you know, what was the, the baseline, if you will, for the end of academic year 2020? And then we can keep in mind the virtual schoolhouse piece. But if we had a drastic change in enrollment in certain high schools, for example, toward the end of the year, I think I'd want to know that, because I don't think the school district was reporting data from the end of this past year to us, from what I know.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Pro?
Thank you, Councilwoman Schrader, for bringing that up. That, that's very helpful. I think that, that helps. That baseline is really important, so that's a lot more clear as far as year-end versus year-begging 19, 20 enrollment. So, Miranda, it's my understanding that the district in general has only adjusted boundaries if there's a new school that's built. That's kind of been their practice over the past several years. Is that right?
Not necessarily. Sometimes a new development is coming in, and they'll preemptively rezone that, that portion to another school. So it might not affect any current students, but it does change boundaries even if there's not necessarily a new school coming in.
Mr. Mayor, a follow-up?
Councilman Pro?
And so do they do that mid-school year, or is that always done at one particular time of the year? And is there, or has there been any conversation about them looking at boundaries district-wide and doing like a, a, a big picture or comprehensive assessment?
So when the Attendance Area Committee meets, and I should also clarify that when I first came to you, I said there was not a standing Attendance Area Committee, and there is. There's a, four members are standing members. So when the Attendance Area Committee meets, they do look at the district as a whole. But because we're in such a time that we're growing so fast, and a school's being built every year, that means that boundaries are already changing every year. And the district tries really hard not to, what, what they call bounce kids. So they don't want to move a kid while they're in second grade, and then have to move them again in fifth grade, and then do some big comprehensive thing. And now suddenly, they're not with their friends when they're going into their middle school. So they really try hard to make sure that the kids aren't bounced, and that also they feed into the middle school with, I believe the percentage is 30%, with at least 30% of their current classmates. So there's a lot of little things that go into it that would make any kind of big district, let's just do it all at once, comprehensive change. For one, I don't think that the community would take it very well. And then also, there would be a lot of kids, I think, that would get bounced from that.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Burt?
Miranda, this, this is great data. So I'm so grateful for it. I think it's going to help us out a lot. Sometimes I find myself wanting to flip-flop in my mind in regard to, you know, am I here, or am I over here? It's, it's really, it, this data is going to really keep us in, uh, in check and going in the right direction, so. And it's data we've always wanted, but, you know, we've never had. So it's, it's extremely valuable, so I want to say thank you for your time and for your effort. So I know it takes a, a big chunk of what you do, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Cavanagh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Miranda, again, I think this is a, a great resource for us as council. And Councilmember Schrader, I think, asked a question about virtual schoolhouse that kind of created an idea in my mind about, will there be a point where we feel like that we can make some assumptions about what charter schools, virtual schools, private schools, what that utilization of development may create? Or does that current number, that point seven students, take into account that some percentage of students are also going to be going to a non-traditional school of some sort?
So it does. So when we first talked about student generation rate when I came to you, I think it was my second week, and we talked about that point eight number, that was school-age population. So looking at census data, how many school-age kids are we realistically and in his, historically producing per housing, per household? The point seven and point one is how many West Ada students are we producing per house, per housing unit?
Perfect. I appreciate you making that, that clarification, because I know, at least sometimes when I look at, you know, open space or amenities, I look at that particular number that's generated and being able to kind of determine how many young people are going to be living in that neighborhood. So having that distinction is, is very, very helpful. I appreciate it. Thank you for the clarification. That's great.
Council, any further questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Pro?
Again, Miranda, I just want to say, I just am so impressed with this and excited, really excited about it. And the, the school district, the factor involving with the number of students has been such a, a significant part of our conversations this year. I know that the city tracks its demographics from year to year. We do, we have an annual report that, that tries to get an idea of the ages of our residents. And I wonder, I'm wondering if that, any of that information is helpful? Are we seeing that we are having an older population of residents move into the city? And is that part of when in, what went into adjusting the number of students per unit? Are we seeing our age, ages increase here in Meridian? And will that allow us to, I mean, will there be some capacity that will be freed up in a decade or, or something like that?
That's definitely something we can look at. The, I used, so we do have a growth committee with the city. Because this was more specific to areas, and I didn't want to be cherry-picking data from the growth committee and all these different sources, and also because I really wanted to kind of look with West Ada at what they were having as a district, because it's not realistic for them to say, this city generates this, and this city generates this. So, um, looking at, we looked at census data rather than what the City of Meridian Growth Committee puts out. So I looked at historical census data. And the historical census data actually did for the areas that we looked at in West Ada was, I think it was like point seven zero three, and City of Meridian was like point seven zero one. So even though this is based on West Ada as a whole, the City of Meridian data was close enough. It, you know, it was a thousandth of a point off that I'm comfortable using this data for the City of Meridian. But I could look at, you know, historically, if we're aging more, if you would like.
Well, I, I think we'll have the real answer to that in about six to seven months when we see the actual new census data that can provide the best information for us rather than guesstimating.
And I think that's something that, I, I don't want to speak for them, but I, you alluded to, I think that's something the growth committee is already looking at. So I wouldn't want to double their, their efforts.
All right. Miranda, last question is, based upon the feedback that you've received and where you are, at what point in time would you expect council would start to see, assuming you're not making any, don't have to go get more information, you could start at least putting this into development applications moving forward?
So would, I do wanna ask before I answer that, would you like me to take out the 2016 data, just so it's a little more concise? Or as a council, would you like me to leave that?
I'd prefer that you leave it in.
Okay. So leaving in, leaving in the 2016 data, and I'm gonna have to do a little bit of research to get those end 2019 numbers, if you'd like me to use that for enrollment. The November 2019 enrollment is posted on the State Department of Education website, so I'll go pull that and use that for the enrollment. And I, I don't see any reason that this can't begin going into some of the applications as they come up. I'm not sure that they'll be backfilled into any staff reports that have already been written, but as applications come up, I can look at adding this in without the preliminary plaid, and I think Caleb has something as well.
Thank you. Just to add to that, yeah, that's, I think, the Planning and Zoning Commission, those staff reports, I mean, we'd wanna share this information with the commission first, so there'd be a little bit of a lag in that information getting to them, and then to you. I guess the other question that we have for you all, the expectation, you know, if it's a four-lot subdivision, are we, are we gonna have Miranda do this analysis? Is there a threshold for which you want this table included? If we have her do it for all staff reports, it's gonna be pretty time-consuming, so I guess, is there a threshold level, a number of lots? Obviously, commercial, we don't need to do it for, but I, I would like some direction on that of, again, a threshold, 25 lots, 40 lots, 50, you know, whatever that number is, and some direction to say, when you get X number of lots, please, please include this table in the staff report. I think that's, that's important information for us to have as well.
And I would propose that be at 50, but it is y'all's decision.
Mr. Mayor, I was gonna ask Miranda about that. I heard her say that earlier, and just curious, what, 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 why is 50 the good number? I, I don't disagree with it.
So I went in and actually looked at, just kind of for some reference, I went in to say, how many kids, how many units would have to be built into, let's say Pleasant View, for example, where, what would be the threshold that would, suddenly they would need an extra classroom? So I thought about how many students are generated by a development, and in an elementary level, when does that become a new classroom? Because when you're talking about adding a classroom to a school, it's not even, it's not always possible. It's not just squeezing a couple extra kids into a room, you need a whole new classroom. So that number was around, I think it was around 45, or, I'm sorry, it was around 55 or 60. And so I just wanted to be on the safe end, so I dropped down, well, let's just calculate it up from 50 then. So if there's 50 units, then that's where it would start kind of tipping the scales on how many classrooms are needed in an elementary setting. High school and middle school's different, because they move around, so.
Okay, thank you.
Council, just to, just to play a little bit of, I don't wanna say devil's advocate to that number, but one of the things I did talk to them, and I at least wanna bring this up for your consideration, is, does it matter what the current threshold of the school is? What if the school is already at 125% capacity? Would you wanna know that even for, and I, I'm going to go back to development application that was on five acres in an area where council was concerned about the amount of traffic of five-acre development was gonna make on a otherwise completely 100% developed mile of land from a traffic perspective? So I, I think that there's a general threshold, maybe okay, but what if the schools are all currently overcrowded, over capacity? And I think Councilman Strater was maybe gonna speak to that thought.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I was having the same thought. I was hoping, Miranda, perhaps what you could do as to not create extra work would be something like a, a running list of those known schools that are clearly over capacity and approximately how far they are, and then you could put that estimate in without doing the full analysis. But to the mayor's point, I, if the school is already over 100% capacity, and we already know generally how far over it is, I don't need you to redo all the math, but I do think I would want to know that. I, I have a strong preference to try to get the year-end, the academic year-end 2020 spring enrollment numbers, as opposed to the November 2019. Again, because I've heard some individual information that there may be schools that are very far off of what the beginning of that year was.
So you want me to get, I'm sorry, instead of November of 2019, you would rather me have spring of 2019? I'm sorry, spring of 2020?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
Yeah, like what the year-end was right here before we started the summer. I think most schools should have that, and I have heard on an individual school level that there are many schools that were very far off at year-end compared to where they were in the beginning.
Okay.
My only advice is for council to consider is, just make sure we get the same data from the same location for each time we do this. Whatever that, wherever you can get it, or wherever you can find it. I, I don't wanna have Miranda calling and getting individual data from different sources. These would be one-stop shop for consistency.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Since each application is so different, the, the threshold of 50 makes sense, but, you know, 50 units that are, you know, a quarter acre is gonna be entirely different to, to some extent, then, you know, so density plays a role in this, I guess. So if, have you, have you considered the idea of maybe only creating the chart if, if the amount of students is going to go, is gonna change the pop, student population of those schools by a certain percentage, rather than like the residential units? So if, if this development's gonna cause this elementary school to, to increase its student population by, say, 5%? Or, I don't know, because the, the 50 units, if, you know, obviously, we're talking about 50 single-family units, not 50 multifamily, because the metric for measuring that is different. So I'm just wondering, with as many different types of applications as we get, is that, like, if we have a 55-plus community, or even some of the applications we get where the houses are really built for retirees, but they're not calling it a 55-plus community, it's gonna, there's gonna be a lot less student enrollment for that? So I just hate to have you do a whole lot of work on something just based on it being 50 units or more. I don't know how to filter that out, but.
I mean, we could say 50 single-family, and then set a different number for multifamily. We could also look at the agency letter. It may or may not come before I start my analysis, but if it's showing that a school's already at capacity, then definitely run the numbers if, you know. There's so many little factors that could come into play to start having to make some kind of rubric on when would we even run this table? Would be a whole nother piece of work, which I'm fine doing, but if the point of the rubric is to reduce the work, then it would be counterproductive to make a rubric that I would then have to run to decide if I was gonna do the work, if that makes sense. I appreciate that y'all are trying to reduce the amount of the, the output that I have to do, but the rubric might be more time-consuming than if I just ran the table. I say that bef, with the knowledge that I haven't looked at, I haven't finished looking at the preliminary plat data, and that is very labor-intensive. So my, yeah, let's do it for 50 units, might sound a lot different once I start looking at that.
Miranda, maybe for now, we could just start with you doing it for all of them, and you can track and see what it is, and council can see the value, and we can readjust in a month. See what that looks like. At least that way you track the actual time it takes for you to do the work. And I think as we, as you develop the data and the knowledge, it will go quicker, and I'm, hopefully we can get to some sort of automation, but we can at least start there, and, and you and I can chat on what, what the level of effort really is, and we can come back to council if we need to.
Okay.
Okay. All right, well, we will start seeing this after she gets the PNZ, we'll update, and we'll go from there.
Thank you. Have a good night, y'all.
Okay, council, we are moving on to item 15, ordinance number 20-1892. I will ask the clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This ordinance pursuant to Idaho Code Section 51,002 and 51,003, providing for a title and findings, providing for the adoption of a budget and the appropriation of $129,364,101 to defray the necessary expenses and liabilities of the City of Meridian, in accordance with the object and purposes, and, and in the certain amounts herein specified for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2020, and ending on September 30th, 2021, to levy all, all such appropriate taxes and levies as authorized by law upon taxable property, and to collect all authorized revenue to provide for a waiver of the second and third readings pursuant to Idaho Code Section 59,02, and providing for an effective date and the filing of a certified copy of this ordinance with the Secretary of State.
Council, you've heard this item read by title. Is there anyone who would like it read in its entirety? Seeing none, so I have a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Sorry, I didn't have the printed version of the agenda in front of me. I move that we approve ordinance number 201892 with a suspension of rules.
I have a motion, second, to approve ordinance number 201892 under suspension of rules. Is there a discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Uh, item number 16 is ordinance number 20-1893. I'll ask the clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance of the City of Meridian, Idaho, amending ordinance number 191849, the appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2019, and ending on September 30th, 2020, fiscal year 2020, appropriating monies that are to be allocated by the City of Meridian, Idaho, in the negative sum of $9,126,407, to provide for a waiver of the second and third readings pursuant to Idaho Code Section 59,02, and providing an effective date.
Council, you've heard this item read by title. Is anyone like it read in its entirety? And the public? But there's no public on the line, so if not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
I move that we approve ordinance number 201893 with a suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion, second, to approve ordinance number 201893 under suspension of the rules. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? The ayes have it? And a motion is agreed to.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
I move that we go into an executive session, parrot code 74-206A1ANF.
Second motion.
I have a motion, second, to adjourn into executive session. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, the clerk call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, ordinance.
Aye.
Cavanagh. Pro.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
All ayes. What's for dinner?
Rich crackers and red wine.
Excellent.
Yeah, we decided last one, then I'm, okay, well. Jimmy John's, you're like, eat this.